Um, Ca- Kathy. You're supposed to be here. All right. We will, it is four o'clock. We will call the regular meeting of planning, programming, and zoning commission to order. First item on the agenda, do we have approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second item, do we have approval of minutes, um, of the regular meeting from last month, which was on November fifth?
I have an amendment for the minutes. There are, um, a few spelling errors. I, I counted three throughout, but the most important one is on page five in the packet and on page four of the item. Um, the word should be subjective. I mean, the word is subjective. It, yeah, the word is, um, subjective and the word that needs to be corrected is objective.
Oh, right here.
Um, it, it talks about the color is generally not, uh, regulated as it, it can be an objective issue, but the word should be subjective. Okay? And so that's, and then there are a couple others throughout the set of minutes, but they weren't very, uh, important. So that's all the corrections I found.
Their motion to approve the revised minutes?
Second.
Seconded.
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll have the financial report for October.
This is Anderson with staff. So we are at thirty-three percent of the year for the budget. Um, we are pretty much on track, um, on everything on the, uh, expense side. Um, at about thirty-two percent. On the revenue side, um, we are right on track with everything except for being slightly behind in some, uh, sale of property and lease of property. Um, obviously some of the leases just come in later in the year for farms and all that, and we need to sell some more property to, to get up to speed. And then we are ahead on some other, uh, leases of property. That would actually be the mining of the, uh, Brinker Lake area. They're ahead of schedule mining a lot more equipment because of all the construction in the area. So overall, we're in very good shape.
Are there any questions for staff?
So what's the percentage on the revenue?
We should be at thirty-three percent of the year, um, for the end of October.
Uh, and thirty-two percent for the expenses?
I mean, if, if we were exactly, we'd be thirty-three percent at everything. Um, so like I said, on the expenses, for the most part, we're at thirty-two percent in most categories. And on the other side, it's, it's broken out into different categories and you can see where we're at on those percentages. Some at thirty-five, some at fourteen, fifty-four.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Move we approve the minutes?
I'll second that.
Uh, this financial, financial report.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we ha- will have oral presentations. This is for anybody who is here to speak on a non-agenda item. If you are here to speak on an item that isn't already on the agenda, please come forward and state your name and address. Okay? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. The time is four oh four and a he- hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by Fred Rose Elsie for a site plan amendment to the M two P planned industrial district for a fourteen thousand three hundred square foot airplane hangar located east of twenty-seven ninety Livingston Lane. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that no notification letters were required to be sent out to the public for this request since all land is owned by the city of Waterloo." We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. First, we will have the staff report.
Okay. Uh, the applicant is requesting to construct a new fourteen thousand three hundred square foot airport hangar on city of Waterloo owned property at the Waterloo Regional Airport. Uh, the request to construct an airport hangar would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area as it would appear to be compatible with other, uh, industrial and commercial development in the area. The proposed site plan amendment would not appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area. The site is served by Betsworth Drive, which is a local road, and Airport Boulevard, which is a collector. Uh, there are no trails or sidewalks in the immediate project area. Uh, the area in question has been zoned M two P planned industrial district since March thirteenth, nineteen ninety-five, um, when the land was rezoned from A one agricultural district to allow for industrial and commercial development on the site. Uh, surrounding land uses and their zoning designations as follows: To north is a Hangar Four Airport Zone M two P Planned Industrial District. To the south, vacant land zone M two P Planned Industrial District. To the east, airport zoned M two P Planned Industrial District. To the west, parking and airport zone M two P Planned Industrial District. No buffers are needed regarding this request. The applicant will need to submit and execute a landscaping plan for the site during the building permit approval process. Um, it will be necessary that a storm water detention plan is submitted as well as, um, SWP P P, uh, Stormwater Prevention Protection Plan to the Engineering Department for review and approval. Uh, the proposed request would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage in the area. Uh, the surrounding area is mostly vacant hangars or, uh, runways to the north, south, and east. Land of the west consists of, uh, Waterloo Regional Airport with buildings constructed from the nineteen fifties to the two thousands. None of the properties located in the hundred year floodplain is indicated by FEMA. Um, there is an eight inch sewer line that connects to the project site and ten inch storm sewer underneath Betsworth Drive. In addition, there is a twelve inch sewer line and eighteen inch storm sewer along Airport Boulevard. Uh, should also be noted that the water lines are owned by the airport and not the Waterloo Water Works. The applicant will have to work with the airport to tie into their water main and work with Mid-American Energy to relocate existing power lines. Uh, there are multiple u- utilities located within the area of the proposed, uh, building, uh, that will need to be, uh, relocated as part of the project. Um, future land use map designates the area to the north, east, and west as parks, open space, hospitals, government facility, public areas, and governmental facilities. Land of the south is designated as industrial. Uh, the, uh, applicant is requesting to construct a fourteen thousand three hundred square foot airport hangar. Uh, the area in question is own M two P Planned Industrial District. And the zoning is design, uh, is designed to permit the establishment of industrial parks and provide for the orderly planned growth of in- industries on large tracts of land and allowing for greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and building locations. Uh, it is also intended that such industrial parks be, uh, developed to maximize the potential of industrial areas at the time minimize any adverse effect upon adjacent, uh, properties, uh, in other zoning districts. Site plan notes elevation contours, neighboring tracts of land, lot dimensions, hangar location, and road access. Uh, plot will not be, need to be submitted for this area as part of this request. This area will remain in owner's ownership of the city of Waterloo. Uh, the city will own the hangar once the lease period expires. Uh, the proposed site plan amendment area is designated as Zone C on the Waterloo Airport land use and height overlay map. The maximum elevation height of the structure allowed at the airport hangar site is nine hundred and ninety-three feet, and the base elevation for the site is only eight hundred eighty-five feet. The height of the hangar is twenty-nine feet and the base elevation plus the hangar height is only nine hundred fourteen feet, which is seventy-five feet, nine feet less than what is the maximum height allowed for the site. In addition, no impacts are anticipated regarding the proposed land use, uh, for the building of an airport hangar, and the proposed building is considered a compatible use in the city of Waterloo Airport land use and height overlay zoning ordinance. Therefore, all conditions are met. Uh, for the technical review committee, Lori Glover, uh, with Blackout County Emergency Manager, asked if there, uh, was any coordination with Federal Aviation Administration. Hiberna noted that the applicant has been working with Waterloo Airport Director Keith, uh, Casperi and Alex Bauer with Fairgram to address all FAA concerns and obtain all necessary FAA approvals for the project. Christopher Peterson with the Waterloo Fire Department noted that the building may need to be sprinkled as well. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment in the M two P Planned Manufacturing District be approved for the following reasons. Request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Uh, the request would appear to have a positive impact upon the surrounding area by infusing private investment into the airport and related use at the Waterloo Regional Airport. That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited to landscaping, drainage setbacks, and et cetera. And that's the staff report.
So I have, I have a question. This is Do Not. Um, were all the technical review committee, uh, concerns addressed?
Um, yeah, yes, they, yes, they were.
They were. Okay. And that was my only question. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant here? Um, would you like to address the commission? Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address this agenda item?
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Keith Casper, Airport Director. Uh, much like the previous project that this committee approved earlier this year, which, um, the steel is up, the side paneling is going up, uh, that project is, is well underway. This is just another example of a great private investment into the city and the airport department. Um, really looking forward to working with Fred and, and his client and, and related constructors to get this project underway, uh, as soon as possible. Um, we still have some somewhat favorable weather conditions to do some geotechnical work, I believe. Um, in addition to working with Fairgram and Alex, uh, the architect of record on this job to, uh, begin the, um, unfortunately long-drawn-out FA airspace review case, uh, which can take, you know, upwards of ninety days, if not more. So again, really looking forward to getting this project underway and, um, uh, getting this project completed still, uh, but prior to the close of calendar year twenty twenty, if, if at all possible. And would entertain any questions that you folks may have?
Um, this is Do Not. I, I have a question about the weather concerns that you brought up in your ninety days, uh, that you had the air review case. Um, do you have any weather concerns in that case being reviewed?
No, that's, that's all taken care of, uh, and in-house by the central region. Uh, V Stewart, I believe, is the, uh, FA official that's going to be overseeing the airspace review case for this project.
Because the, the weather in the next ninety days is not going to be favorable to doing outdoor activities. So...
The airspace review case, though, Eric, uh, Mr. Do Not, will, will be done, um, in-house and electronically, just to make sure that the height of the building doesn't conflict with any of the, uh, airspace height zoning concerns that the FA may have.
Okay.
And it does not, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Okay. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion, um, to approve the request by Fred Rose Elsie for a site plan amendment to the M two P Planned Industrial District to allow for the construction of a fourteen thousand three hundred square foot airport hangar located east of twenty-seven ninety Livingston Lane. Because the request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the request would appear to have a positive impact upon the surrounding area by infusing private investment into the airport related, airport-related use at the Waterloo Regional Airport. Um, contingent upon that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including without limited to landscaping, drainage, setbacks, et cetera.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is a request by Nathan Walter to vacate the alleyway between Wind Dot Street and Osage Avenue, between Ogden Avenue and Milwaukee Avenue. First, we'll have the staff report.
To start off with staff, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular pedestrian movements in the area as appears the right of way has never been used and there are fences blocking access to it. The alleyway wor- runs between Milwaukee Avenue and Ogden Avenue, both of which are local streets. The nearest recreational trail is Cedar Valley Lakes Trail, which is located point three nine miles to the southwest. The area of the proposed vacate is zoned R two one and two family residence district. It's been zoned such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. To the north is residential zoned R two one and two family residence district. To the south is vacant land and residential zoned R two one and two family residence district. To the east is residential agricultural zoned R two one and two family residence district. And to the west is residential and vacant land zoned R two one and two family residence district. There, um, vacation of the right of way would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area. There are no known utilities in the alley to be vacated. There is an eight inch sanitary sewer line located in Ogden Avenue, Milwaukee Avenue, and Wind Dot Street. There is also a twenty-four inch storm sewer located in Ogden Avenue. The applicant is requesting to vacate approximately zero point two two acres of city right of way located between Milwaukee Avenue and Ogden Avenue, between Wind Dot Street and Og- and Osage Avenue. It appears that the alley has never been used as a public alley and the neighboring residents of, on Milwaukee Avenue have put fences across the right of way. There appears to be no need now or in the future for this right of way. All adjoining property owners have signed and intend to vacate requests to purchase their portions that adjoins their land. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate approximately zero point two two acres of right of way be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or pedestrians, traffic conditions in the surrounding area, and the alleyway is not needed for public purposes.
Any questions for staff?
Do we need to put a, um, something over the, uh, vacate area or the adjoining area to protect the utilities?
There are no utilities in the alleyway.
But I'm looking at the eight inch sanitary sewer and so on in Ogden Avenue.
Those are in the streets, not in the alleyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
This is Holdman. They're gonna, they're asking to vacate the entire thing?
Yes.
And then everybody's gonna buy their...
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
This is Butch. And I just have one question, and it's just because I'm sort of accountant type. I noticed in a couple of these, there's an, a, there's an offer price, but that it ends up being a dollar. That, is that just routine?
Um, it's a, they're gonna sign a development agreement because they're gonna build new, uh, at least one new house on the property on some of the land.
Oh.
So, yeah.
All right. So they're just getting it for a dollar?
Uh, that's up to Noel and City Council.
This is Anderson, Anderson with staff. Ultimately, it'll be up to the city council. The, the sale of property policy, um, essentially puts a price per square foot, asking price based on the assessed value.
Mm-hmm.
But you can reduce that price, um, by investment into the site and taxes to be created. In this particular location, it's in the Cura, the Consolidated Urban Revitalization Area, so the reimbursement period is eight years. And so obviously, if they're gonna build a new house there, um, that gentleman can definitely get it for a dollar. I believe he's working with his neighbors to get the whole thing vacated so they can all get theirs for a dollar with his new house going in. Um, you know, ultimately, it's great to get it back on the tax rolls, get it. The city doesn't need it for any purpose. And quite honestly, if it was platted as an alley, the city didn't pay anything for it. Um, so it's, it's just good to get it back to the citizens.
Right. I didn't realize that there was gonna be a house built, so that makes good sense. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing that no one else is in attendance, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the, uh, request by Nathan Walter to the alleyway, to vacate the alleyway between Yandot Street and Osage Avenue and between Ogden Avenue and Milwaukee Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate a portion of West Airline Highway located west of thirty seventy West Airline Highway. First, we'll have staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area as the area to be vacated is not needed city right of way. Um, the area is zoned M one light industrial district is zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Neighboring land uses and their zoning to the north agricultural and Canadian National Railroad and Waterloo Airport Zone M two P Planned Industrial District. To the south is industrial zoned M one light industrial district. To the east, industrial zone M one light industrial district. And to the west, industrial zone M one CZ light industrial conditional zoning and M one light industrial district. And... There is a twelve inch sanitary sewer line, overhead electrical lines, and a possible gas line located in the section to be vacated. Therefore, easement will need to be maintained after the vacate. The city is requesting to vacate seventy-four hundred and forty-five square feet of Airline Highway right of way. A portion of the right of way was acquired, um, when there was a proposal to add, a portion of the right of way was acquired when there was a proposal to add a frontage road to Airline Highway. Additional portions of the right of way were vaca- have been vacated for possible expansion of Airline Highway when it was US twenty. There is utilities in the vacate area. Therefore, easement will need to be maintained over the vacate area. On December fourth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission voted to vacate sixty-five thousand four hundred ninety square feet of the right of way located immediately to the west of the vacate request. The vacate request was approved by city council on January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen with ordinance fifty-four seventy-nine. The vacate request will extend the limits of the previous vacate and additional eighty feet to the east, allowing additional area for redevelopment of the site. Therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate seventy hundred, seventy-four hundred and forty-five square feet of Airline Highway right of way located adjacent to thirty seventy West Airline Highway be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding area. The request for vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The area to be vacated is not needed for right of way. The right of way to the west has previously been vacated with the following condition, that easement be maintained under, upon, and above the proposed vacate area.
This is Holdman. I have a question for you. Um, I think when we did the sixty-four thousand or whatever it was, where, what, back in January, they had someone that was interested in purchasing the property. Is that the case here, or is the city gonna retain ownership?
This is Anderson with staff. So there's a building being constructed right now just to the west of this. Um, when we vacated the previous portion, um, I don't believe we actually owned the portion back behind this. So if you basically took the area being vacated and followed it up to the railroad tracks, um, we worked with Control of Facts, uh, which is now Criterion. Um, once we had that being built, originally, we bought the six acres to the west of the, the Criterion building, um, for future industrial development. After we had, uh, a prospect ready to go build on that, they realized that they didn't have much of a strip left and it was being farmed, so they offered that up to us to buy as well. Um, by selling that additional land, the building's actually gonna be a little bit bigger that's being built now, and we just have to go back and vacate this portion, which, when we vacated the other part, we didn't have the part behind it yet. So...
All right. Thank you.
Just kinda missed this piece before because we weren't ready for it.
So I have a question now. Are these two areas, the one that we vacated back in January of whatever that time was, December of eighteen, um, and this that we're vacating tonight, if it's approved, are these two connected? Could you look at a map and say, oh yeah, these two run?
Yes, it's, it's, it's abutting it to the west, so this'll just look like, eventually, it'll look like one big parcel.
It was one continuous strip. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? Seeing nobody else here to speak on this. Do we have a motion?
Move to close the hearing?
Oh, whatever. Whatever this was.
Want to take the motion to...
I will do that. I will do that, too. Yeah. If we need to do that. So I'd, I'd like to move to, um, accept or approve the request by the city of Waterloo to vacate seven thousand four hundred and forty-five square foot of Airline Highway adjacent to three thousand seventy West Airline Highway. Um, request to vacate, vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The area to be vacated is not needed for right of way. The right of way to the west was previously vacated, and the area is not needed for right of way purposes with the following condition, that an easement be maintained under, upon, and above the pro- proposed vacate.
Your second?
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. All right. Are there any other discussion items before we get to the election of the chairperson and vice chairperson? I would just note that our next meeting will be January seventh of twenty twenty.
I did, I did have one discussion item. I was interested in whether we were gonna follow up on the sidewalk discussion that we had talked about last couple meetings, whether that was gonna be followed up upon about a special work session with the co- with this commission?
I think we had decided to wait until after kind of, until the new year.
Okay.
But that can definitely be something that, um, do we email you to kind of coordinate that? Help us coordinate that, or...
Maybe plan it in January, February, once the new council's in place.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
All right. I'm making a note.
Hope John wrote that down.
January, February.
John does the agenda, so.
Okay.
So that, that was all I was thinking about.
And for those of you, I think everybody knows what we're talking about. We had decided that it might be worthwhile to have a special meeting, um, to just talk about kind of a reoccurring theme that we've had come up, um, on completion of side we, sidewalks and, and as we get, um, more new development throughout the community. So...
Yeah, and this was related to following through with complete streets policy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion items?
I just need to say one thing. This is Butch. Um, due to some health issues, which are personal, um, I'm going to be ending my, um, tenure here in April of two thousand twenty.
Okay.
That, which is the end of it anyway, but just to let you know.
Well, we thank you for your service.
Yep.
Wish you the best.
And since you brought that up and we're missing two commissioners, if you know anybody, I know there's, er, almost every board right now in the city needs people. I know historic commission needs them, community development needs them. So get the word out to, you know, help us out on these boards and get some volunteers to, because you guys do a great job, and we need some more volunteers.
John, could you send us an email as to what commissions are needing and what, and where people can go? I know the Courier does a good job about advertising that, but I think I might have missed it. So if you, could you email us?
I'll send out an email with the application that goes to the mayor and I know, like I said, I only think almost every board right now needs somebody, so...
Okay.
And just so you know, I have a, a friend who is considering running for this, for this area or for our commission, but I, um, I sent her the, um, well, I tried to open up that app thing on, on the site, and it didn't open twice. So I had to tell her to just go to the mayor's office. So that needs to be fixed if it's not...
We can get you one today.
I haven't looked lately, but...
And so I would just like to, to, not my own horn, but the horn of the Waterloo Commission for Human Rights. We have nine members on that commission, and they're all attending meetings, and I just wanted to say congratulations and toot their horn and say that they're doing good.
This is Holdman. I have actually two things, but the first one is how many people can we have on, on this commission?
Two more. Are we missing?
This is Schrader with staff. It's a nine-member board, but there are three positions on the board that are appointed by other boards and commissions.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And are we missing one from, is it community development?
Yes, we're missing one from community development and one from at-large.
Okay.
My other, my other thing is, Marcia, it's customary in the time that I've been on this commission that the retiring member brings treats for everybody else. So keep that in mind.
I can do that. I can do that.
Your, your notice is... Your, your notice is when?
Or when?
From when they announced.
Anybody diabetic?
Oh, okay.
I think it's every, I think it's every meeting from the time you announce until you actually leave.
Well, we could do that.
Well, let's see, that'll be around April Fool, so we'll see.
Are there any other discussion items before we get to the election? Okay. So next item on the agenda is the election of chairperson and vice-chairperson.
I would like to nominate Virginia to continuous chairman.
I'll second that.
And I'd like to close nominations.
I'd like to nominate myself to run for vice chair.
How about if I do it, how about if I do it for you? How's that? That would, so I would nominate Eric to be vice chair.
I just wanted to open up the nomination so that you could do that, because she was closing nominations, so I just.
No, for chairman, for chairman.
That was for chair.
For chairman only.
Want us to do it separately, or do we?
I didn't know that we were doing it.
I think we could probably just do it all at once.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to?
For chairman?
For chairperson, for.
For.
Both.
Or vice chair.
Or either.
I guess if there's either.
I would like to nominate Greg, Greg Holdman for vice chair.
Okay. Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. Close the nomination and.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do we do motion?
I move that we cast the unanimous ballot for Virginia Wilbur as chairperson.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I won't hold it against you. You've done a great job, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have two nominations for vice chair. I guess.
Well, I guess we should ask, are you okay with being nominated? Okay.
You did a great job, you filled in, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Do you have, should we do a roll call, or just?
If you'd like. We just do a show of hands?
Trying to remember how we did it. Okay. All those in favor of Eric Do Not for vice chair? Raise your hand. All right, all those in favor of Craig Holdman? Okay. Craig, you are vice chairperson. All right. Any additional items? And thank you to everybody for serving as long as we're on that topic.
For me, it is.
It is. If, if I could, I would, I would stand, because I really have enjoyed the time, I did.
All right, well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second? Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.